Good evening and welcome to the November twenty first Village of Tocco Planning Board Meeting. Mr. Gerson, please take attendance.
Commissioner Barra.
President.
Commissioner Suarez.
President.
And Chairman Leo.
President. On the agenda this evening, we have the, we have to postpone the approval of the meeting minutes of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, since some of our members are not here this evening. One oh eight Sagamore Road has been adjourned, and we have sixty-four Main Street, which is a new restaurant, and two-twenty-five Marble Dale Road, which is a site plan approval review. At this point, I'd like to call up two-twenty-five Marble Dale Road. You have to complete step up. Identify yourself and tell us about the project.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Yuri Tepachuk. I am the Licensed Professional Engineer at Key Civil Engineering, located at six-six-four Blue Point Road in Oldsboro, New York, one-one-seven-four-two. We are the civil engineers for the proposed project, which consists of maintenance activities at the existing Verizon facility located at two-twenty-five Marble Dale Road.
Okay.
The existing site is developed with a building use of Verizon's garage work and dispatch center. The building also provides twenty indoor parking spaces for Verizon vehicles. The remaining side areas are used for parking of thirty-two Verizon vehicles and staging of equipment such as utility poles, cable rails, and small towable trailers. The normal operating hours for the facility on Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM. However, since this is, site is a dispatch garage, there's staff ready for any emergency repairs consisting of outages, fiber repairs, et cetera, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The proposed maintenance work is split into two phases. Phase one consists of proposed underground stormwater detention system to alleviate the flooding in the parking areas. Phase two consists of retaining walls, replacement at the northwest corner of the property, rock fall protection in steep areas of the site, and stabilization of existing ramp used for vehicular access from the street to the parking areas. During heavy rainfall, the southern portion of the parking and staging areas flood due to insufficient number of inlets, existing pump, and force main capacity, making the area inaccessible. Verizon employees have, have been moving the vehicles and equipment from this area to a higher portion of the site while parking them in the street before forecasted heavy rainfall. Currently, there's an existing trench train at the southern end of the parking area that conveys the storm water to an existing structure with a pump. The storm water is pumped from this structure via force main to the storm sewer in the street. The existing force main runs from the parking area to the north through the adjacent property, Sixty Crescent Place, with a connection to a storm manhole in the intersection of Alpine Place and Crescent Place. Based on initial findings by Verizon's legal team, the prior property owner previously owned and subsequently conveyed Sixty Crescent Place by date, dated May thirteenth, nineteen seventy-one. Indeed, it notes that the prior property owner reserves the existing sewer line for themselves, and they assign the right to use and maintain it. The proposed design consists of two additional inlets and an underground detention system with a connection to the existing pump structure. Inlets will capture the storm water and convey it to the detention system. The storm water will be released from the detention system through an orifice pipe at a slower rate to the pump structure. The proposed system will prevent the storm water from pounding in the parking area, and it will allow the pump to get the storm water to the sewer at the pump's capacity and the capacity of the existing six-inch force main.
I'm sorry, let me stop. Is it possible to put that drawing up so the public can see what we're proposing?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, can we switch over to the PowerPoint? Yeah, I think it's your drawing C two that shows that work.
This, this, yeah.
Correct, yeah, that's, that one.
Yeah, so this shows the existing site conditions.
Yeah, if you go, yeah, let's talk about this for a second so people understand what that is. So this is the exact, existing site conditions, correct?
Correct. This existing site conditions, what's shown in yellow is the area of the parking lot that floods.
Okay.
Uh, what's shown in blue is, going from left to right on the screen, it's showing the existing structure where the pump is.
Yep.
And the blue line indicates the force main that basically takes the storm water from the pump structure to the, um, storm manhole at the intersection of Alpine and Crescent.
And you indicate there is a deed dated nineteen seventy-one that allows you access to this pipe.
Correct.
I just want to make sure. You have that, okay? And if you could go to the next slide?
Next slide. This is just showing the flooding that occurs in the parking area with all the Verizon vehicles in the water.
Okay. Adjust that, so you, adjust it so you put it in front of your face, yeah.
I'm a little difficult here.
Okay. You could also hold it if you like, if it makes it easier for you.
Sure. Um, this plan is showing the proposed conditions for what we're planning to do with regards to storm water. So, um, we're proposing two additional inlets at the southern end of the parking area. We're gonna pipe that to detention piping, and that's gonna release it at a slower rate to the existing manhole structure that has the pumps.
So the yellow is your retention system, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right.
If you go to the next slide, it'll show you the detention system that we will be proposing, which is just corrugated, uh, pipe.
Okay, right, right, and, okay. And just go back one slide. Too many, yeah. So, so the, on the left of the yellow, you have, you have a blue line and looks like two red lines?
Correct, yeah. So the blue line is the existing trench train and the pipe. So that's gonna be connected to the new detention system, and the red, two circles and the pipes are, are basically new catch basins.
New catch basins, okay. That'll feed into the retaining system, okay. Right, and, and Mike, we, we sent this, these documentations to our consultants for review, right, which is? Okay.
Uh, and then?
Those are retaining walls, right?
Yep.
The grain is, the retaining walls you, you plan to, uh, to repair?
So Nijam can speak what to retain.
All right. Before you leave, actually, does anyone from the board have any questions for this applicant regarding the retention system?
No, it's very clear.
Okay.
I just have, so, recap. So you guys do have an easement, or you're not being forced?
Yeah.
Do you plan on increasing the size of that pipe, or would that be covered by the easement alley? Do you know if you, if you increase the size of the pipe, is that?
It's covered.
Okay.
Yeah, we're also not changing anything from the existing pump that, and that pipe that runs through the neighbor's property. We're not touching that at all.
Okay.
And before, I just want to make a comment that, so this garage is a, it's a Verizon construction garage, so we, normal operating hours are seven to seven, but in cases of emergency, if there's any, um, you know, blackouts for, you know, any communication for Verizon or fiber, um, we have, we dispatch from the site. So because of the water, um, with this system, it'll help remediate that flooding so that we can, you know, go and repair quickly during emergencies.
As long as Tocco Service First, I'm okay with that.
Yes, yes.
So your operation is twenty-four hours, so there's no, there's no change?
Um, well, it's, normal operating hours are seven to seven, but in case there are emergencies, um, this is where we have on-call personnel that will tend to those emergencies.
Right, but those, those have a change. You have this part dispatched out of there.
That's correct, that is correct.
There's no change in the way this functions, this garage functions?
And the vehicles that are there now, that are affected by the flooding, the, that were in the picture, would they remain there while the work is being done? Are those gonna be moved over? Are they gonna need?
We're, we're going to, it's, it's gonna either remain, or we're going to use other Verizon facilities to temporarily hold these vehicles, so we don't just put them on the road.
No, yeah, the reality is that they're redoing the entire parking lot in the back here, so everything that's here today has to go away. These guys have to put the entire system in, repaving, and so whatever's here has to go away for a couple of weeks. Okay, I'm sorry, come on. Identify yourself and, you could take the mic out of the hole, it sounds like it's having an issue right now.
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Nijam Jundi. I'm with JZN Engineering and the principal of the company.
Okay.
Uh, we've been, we're primarily geotechnical and structural engineers.
Okay.
We've been in business since two thousand and eight. Uh, so we were retained by Verizon to evaluate several stability issues at the site, uh, which mainly is in, as far as the retaining walls are concerned, is split into three different sections. Uh, if you take a look at the plan you see over there, you can see a ramp coming down off of the street. It's highlighted in green. That is basically a retaining wall that has been, retaining that ramp. However, um, based on visual examination, we noticed that that retaining wall is leaning towards the front, and it appears that that leaning took place due to some environment or cleanup that took place a long time ago. So the only option we had without disturbing anything in major construction is to basically put tiebacks on the face of the, of the retaining wall and hold it back so it doesn't lean or move anymore. Uh, all the tiebacks would be drilled in the, within the confines of Verizon facility. It will not go beyond the property line. It's designed to anchor into the rock and will hold the retaining wall in place. It won't move.
I think you have some images you want to share. I think if you got a few pages, there's, so people at home can see what we're talking about. And one more? Actually, I think it's two more.
No, that's.
One more, one more.
Yeah, it will look like that.
On the right-hand side, basically, okay.
We won't have two different tiers, we just have one tier.
Right. And I guess my question is, again, I haven't been to the side, my bad. Is, is there visibility from the street, none whatsoever?
This, you will not be seen because it's on the lower side inside the property.
Okay.
So the only people who will see it is Verizon employees or whoever is visitor inside.
All right.
If, just, if you can go back to the planned view. So now, the, the other two retaining walls, um, uh, the, the western one that goes horizontally across the page, that's an existing retaining wall that was, that is also leaning for some reason, and after evaluation, we decided that the best course of action is to take it out and construct a new retaining wall.
Right.
Uh, the retaining wall will be matching the other retaining wall I'll be talking about in a second. It will be modular block wall.
Okay.
And it also will not be visible to anybody except because it's behind the building and it's under the street like, by fifteen, twenty feet, so no one would see it. Uh, if, can you show him a picture of the retaining wall, please? Yeah, that would be the picture on the left, something similar to this.
Okay.
There's many products and many colors and many, but.
I know, we talked about bringing something here this evening. Did you guys bring anything?
No, we just.
All right, next time.
Yeah. Uh, and basically, that retaining wall would look like the, uh, uh, what you see below in plant, in a profile.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you can go back to the, yeah. Uh, so the last retaining wall is actually, there's no retaining wall currently on the site. It's actually a fence holding the soil between Verizon property and the neighbor's property, just chain link fence. Yeah. So, uh, in an effort to provide stability, we have decided that we're gonna take out the fence, reconstruct a small retaining wall, and put the fence back on top of it.
Right.
And the fence will be a chain link fence approximately the same as what you see in the picture. Uh, we have a better picture of it from a different Verizon site, if you can scroll down. Yeah, that one, the picture on the right-hand side. Will be the same height, same size, same everything. We're not gonna be.
As existing, as existing.
As existing, yes.
Right, and do you know what it is offhand?
Uh, if you look at the detail right below the picture of the fence.
Yeah.
We're gonna put it right behind the wall.
No, 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 I'm saying the height of the fence, because the, the, Village has a code for side yards, you know, I think it's five feet, Mike, max? Not even a zone, okay?
That, that fence probably is more like eight feet high.
Oh, okay. And that's okay, Mike?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the wall from the neighbor's side? Well, right now, there is no sidewalk in the neighbor's side.
So when I'm walking on your sidewalk, are you gonna make your wall flush with the fence like it shows now, or do you go up a step, make a tear, and then have the fence on top of it?
Well, the fence will be on top of it.
On top of it?
Yeah. Six feet, yeah, six feet.
Plus the wall?
Mm-hmm. Four, no, four feet. Six, yeah.
Ten feet?
Yeah. From our side, from the other side would be six feet. We can change the height in any way you want, except that we thought keeping the height from that side would be, put more protection for the public than, even though it's from our side, it's higher, but from the neighbors.
Okay. Yeah, I, I need to go walk this way. Okay, all right. Anything else?
Uh, you wanna talk about the rock fall or no?
Well, yeah, if you're gonna, you gotta install, you gotta, you gotta tell us what you're doing.
Okay.
So go, go back to your retaining wall, uh, uh, plan. Yeah, right there.
So we have the, the two areas on the eastern and western property section. Uh, we have two exposed rock faces, and it has been reported that some rock, small, you know, have rolled down the hill. So what we plan is to stabilize the slopes using rock nets, uh, which basically is a structural net, but it looks like a chain link fence.
Do you have images of, of that so the public can see what you're proposing?
No, actually, I didn't bring any.
All right, so for the next, for the next meeting.
It will be lined with, uh, a mat, a geomat, which allows for growth. So over time, like a year or so, the, the grass will cover the net, and you won't, won't even see it, it's there.
But for the, for the next meeting, just bring some images so we have.
Okay. Uh, the geomat will be worked into the fence, into the net. It comes like as one unit almost.
No, but I think Mike is asking, you gotta, I gotta put grass in there.
It's preceded.
It's preceded, okay. Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, okay, thank you. Anything else? Yeah, no, I have, I have a list here of things that I would like to go over, okay. So at the workstation, we, we did speak about providing a part, a striped parking plan based on, um, how you plan to park your, um, your vehicles. That's my next PowerPoint. Thank you. As well as, uh, your storage locations. So we had, uh, identify key storage locations for your poles and everything else you're storing on site. Uh, we asked for also the fencing materials, the block materials, uh, just samples of what you're proposing to use. Um, and those, and the hours of operation you told us about. So, yeah, those are the things that, so if we could have that for the next meeting, uh, that would be great.
Um, so some of the samples, you want us to bring the physical blocks?
It could be photographs of, it could be photographs of, yeah, of the blocks. I don't expect you to carry a block around. Some, typically, you'll have like small samples, so if we can get ahold of those, that'd actually be better. Uh, and the same thing with like fence material, but otherwise photographs, just indicating what you, or brochures of from the manufacturer, that, that would suffice.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll have that, um, available next time.
And as we said earlier, we have your application. We sent it off to our, our consultants. So as soon as we hear back from our consultants, we'll, Mike and Bill and I will let you know. Hopefully, everything is fine. Otherwise, if you have to make some adjustments, please make the adjustments as quick as possible. Uh, then is also, do we have the, um, the funds from the applicant for the reviews?
The process right now, what we're waiting for is, we have, um, one of our consultants already is on board Frank Fish's office. He does all of the, um, the parking lot, and he'll do the traffic study if there is one. Um, the other two consultants, the engineer and the storm water, we're waiting for them to give us an estimate. So we'll contact you guys with how much of an escrow we'll need to get things started. At that point, they have the plans already. At that point, they'll review the plans, come up with comments, and probably most of the time, they deal directly with your engineers, or they'll send comments to us, we'll forward it to you. But we try to put you guys in touch with them. This way, it works along faster. My suggestion is still to come back to the work session next month. Just by then, hopefully, we'll have some comments back, but I can't promise with the holidays and everything.
Okay. I, I, it's the first Tuesday in December.
The fifth.
The fifth?
Yeah, so work session's on the fifth. Hopefully, we can get some comments back by then.
And that's the time when we would bring in either samples or some of the pictures of?
Yes, if, if you could bring that at the workshop and also bring here at, at the next meeting so that the public can see what you're doing.
Hopefully, we get comments back. If not, then I'm sure by the meeting, we will have comments for you guys and we can address them.
So Gary, I think I'll open the public hearings, right?
Yeah, well, now, uh, there's no one here, but you could open it just so we have a record that it's opened.
Okay, uh, I make a motion to open public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Since, there's anyone here to speak on this application this evening? Not you. You're the next applicant, playing. All right. Uh, so since there's no one here to speak on this application, I make a motion to keep the public hearing hope, open until then our next meeting. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we'll see you guys at the next workshop. Hopefully, we'll have all the information we need by then, and we'll go from there. Thank you. Yeah, have a good, have a good night. Good night, take care.
Night.
No, we're doing the, um, no, Main Street, Sagamore's, uh.
Sixty-four.
Yeah.
The restaurant.
Restaurant.
I'd like to call up sixty-four Main Street. The restaurant? Good night, everyone, have a good night. Yeah, you could, you could leave with that. Good for Mike. Seven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Leonard Grandis, representing Ahamataco, which is.
One second, sorry, say it. Okay, thank you.
Which is looking to open a, a second restaurant in the, on Main Street. They have a present restaurant up a couple blocks up, uh, east of this restaurant, and they seem to be doing very well, and they want to continue and have a slightly different fare for this type of restaurant, going to a lighter fare, being able to open on lunchtime and, and close early. They're looking for hours to be approximately from eleven AM to ten PM during the week, and then on Friday and Saturday to, from eleven AM to eleven PM. Uh, the existing space was, uh, previously Nutmeg, which was a bakery and had some seating area. Before that, it was a full restaurant. There was full equipment in there before, so it had a full kitchen in there. Most of it was taken out, and we're just replacing the rest of it, so we're gonna be putting all new equipment in there. The building itself was built prior to any parking regulations that are similar to today's, uh, so there was no parking, but the owner has given us two parking spaces to use for employees, and that is connected to the municipal lot to going to the back of the building from there. So we are seeking to be able to open a new restaurant over there.
Want to just walk us, walk us through your layout, see, tell us what you're doing?
Basically, right across from where we are right now is where the restaurant is. There's two different levels to the building. There will be exhausted, that's being replaced, completely replaced with a new modern system that'll also have a captive air, so it'll be high, you know, efficiency and things like that. It's not gonna be bringing, it's gonna bring in tempered air instead of just cold air coming in for recirculation. Uh, as I mentioned, the parking lot, which is the municipal lot right here, is how you enter back into here and park back in here. So they'll be getting their deliveries in the back in that area over there. This was the existing, you could see there was a full kitchen over here, and the bathrooms are existing. There was a bar which we were using, the bar, except for the back bar we're replacing. The basement itself, by the way, is existing the way it is. It has a walk-in box in the basement, and there's access from, oh, sorry. The basement area I have right here is accessed up into the main area. It's a very small basement. It does not cover all the buildings, just the front section of the building gets into there. So we have the staircase coming from the space over here. We are adding a small partition wall around the columns over here so we can separate the bar area from the seating area. Uh, we are looking for thirty-eight seats total with the bar and the area before. As I said, we're putting all new equipment. It's all listed here now, so we can have all new equipment here, and they will be serving, you know, drinks and tacos. And I'm up for any questions.
Um, as you indicated, uh, this will be from, yeah, hours of operation are gonna be from eleven to ten, and then eleven to eleven on weekends?
On Friday and Saturday nights.
Friday and Saturday nights, okay. So we need to kind of amend the, right, okay. All right, and then, how many employees does this?
They're expecting six employees during busy time.
Okay.
They'll have two or three in the kitchen and then wait, wait step in.
All right. Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. Just application, you have any questions?
What's the occupancy?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight total.
Okay. Any, any questions? Since, uh, okay, at this point, I make a, a motion to open a public hearing. Have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, since, looks like there's no one here this evening to speak on this application, I make a mo, a motion to close the, uh, the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so would you like to read, uh?
Yeah. I'd like to read the resolution. This is sixty-four Main Street. Um, applicant seeks to operate a new restaurant where a bakery was previously located. Seek the resolution. Pursuant to the regulations of SECRE, and this board finds that the action taken herein is a unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. This board, number two, this board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. Number three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Make a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
This will be Monday through Thursday. Okay, and it's Saturday, okay. Okay, uh, the following is a resolution decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco. The applicant is seeking to open a small restaurant at sixty-four Main Street, Tocco, which was recently occupied by a small bakery. The applicant is proposing to make modification to the space in order to open a new restaurant. The restaurant hours of operation will be eleven AM until ten PM, Monday through Friday, and.
And Sunday.
Oh, and Sunday. And then Friday and Saturday hours of operation will be eleven AM to eleven PM. And then Friday and Saturday, hours of operation will be eleven AM to eleven PM. Applicant has obtained two onsite parking spaces, and as a condition to this approval, the applicant must maintain these two spaces for the duration of the lease period. Be resolved that the applicant for this site plan approval of American Brand Restaurant Group, Inc., where the premises located at sixty-four Main Street, Tocco, is approved. The applicant has met the requirements of the Village of Tocco zoning code, section seven dash one, to the satisfaction of this board. Further, every representation of the applicant made, its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval, and the, any deviation from this representations, from the representations made, shall be cause for the revocation of said approval.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, since we have no other business this evening, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Tucker, have a good night, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thanksgiving.